Welcome to the Tuesday, September 22, 2020 meeting of the Law and Methodist School Committee. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. The school committee is using the Zoom meeting platform to conduct this meeting. LCTV is live streaming the meeting on Channel 12. The recording of the meeting will be posted to the LCTV YouTube channel as soon as possible after the meeting. Just a reminder, all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. There is a possible motion. Move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Master General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with all staff, and Purpose Seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session at 7:00 p.m. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Again, the motion is that the school committee will meet in executive session pursuant to Master General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with all staff, and Purpose Seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings to reconvene into open session at 7:00 p.m. This requires a roll call vote. Susie?
Yes.
Aclon?
Yes.
Kep?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Yes.
Kami?
Yes.
Yes for me as well. We will be back at 7 o'clock. Thank you.
Welcome back to the Tuesday, September twenty second, two thousand and twenty meeting with the Long Meadow School Committee. We will now have the pledge of allegiance. We have some correspondence, Kevin.
Thank you, Ryan. Falling correspondence was recorded. A letter from the Long Meadow Board of Health dated September ninth approving the athletics plan for fall sports at Long Meadow High School. An email from Ms. Lisa Mainville dated September tenth regarding remote learning. An email from Ms. Erin Lau dated September tenth regarding the district lines for middle school and bus. A letter from the Town Finance Committee dated September eleventh regarding the financial outlook of the town. Several emailed letters regarding the hybrid learning model from Lauren and Ryan Brady on September fourteenth. Kevin and Megan Sheedy on September fourteenth. Brenda Cashmanian on September sixteenth and Barry De Michelle on September seventeenth.
Thank you. Do we have minutes on the agenda?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the September first, two thousand and twenty school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a roll call vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Yes for me as well. Another possible motion?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the September eighth, two thousand and twenty school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote, Gianna?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Next up, we have visitor comments. If there's any visitor with us who would like to speak tonight, you have the opportunity now. Let me know in the chat or make yourself known. Seeing none, we'll add the school committee announcements and recognitions. Committee members? Gianna?
Thank you, Ryan. I just wanted to take a minute to thank Mr. Capitasto and anybody involved with the athletics. And the coaches and the parents and guardians and the students because I've heard that there's an extra layer of, you know, health and safety awareness and monitoring going on, especially with Mr. Capitasto's efforts. So I just wanted to say thank you for that added layer and dedication to, you know, giving this opportunity to our students.
Thank you, Gianna. Anyone else?
Yeah, I want to acknowledge the hard work that all of our teachers have been doing, especially the elementary teachers with welcoming kids back. I know how hard this has been for everybody, but especially them trying to figure all this out. They're at the forefront of this and I just want to let them know that we appreciate all the efforts that they've been putting in.
Also, Kevin, Suzie?
I'd like to just echo that. This has been very trying, you can tell, for the teachers and they're doing an amazing job. I think all of the communication that's coming from the schools has been excellent. Seeing it firsthand though, certainly is a different experience than what we're used to and I just want to thank everyone for what you're doing, for what the teachers have been doing to give our kids the most normal experience possible under the circumstances.
Thank you. And the communication we're getting from the families is echoing that sentiment too. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, business with guests? Marty?
Thank you, Ryan. I'd like to have the pleasure reintroducing to you a familiar face, Ms. Marie Pratt. So as everyone is aware, we, Dr. Neil Guile, had an opportunity to take on district level curriculum leadership position over in West Springfield and it was an opportunity, I think that made sense for him personally and professionally. We're super supportive of Neil's interest in that. And so when that happened, obviously it happened at a challenging time, but we wanted to make sure that we had steady experienced, capable leadership at each of our schools. And so Dr. Beth Nelson had some experience as a middle school administrator, had worked as assistant principal at Clunbrook, and so Beth was willing to to fill in for Dr. Guile at Williams. And so leaving us with an opportunity to invite back our friend and former colleague, Ms. Marie Pratt. And so I thought it would be nice to reintroduce Marie, give her an opportunity to share some thoughts and give the committee a chance to welcome her back. We're so appreciative of her stepping into into our schools at this critical moment. Great thing for us was that Marie was involved in Hymn to Wobraham with the development of their hybrid plan and is really familiar with the hybrid plan and is really familiar with the DSE guidance and is very familiar with the arrangements that we have here in place in Long Meadow. So Marie has hit the ground sprinting and we appreciate that. And she guided Wolf Swamp through the first, is guiding Wolf Swamp through the first week of in-person learning. So thanks so much, Marie. Welcome back. And maybe we'll give the floor to you for a little bit. And then if the committee has any questions or wants to simply say hello, they can.
Great, thank you. It's great to be back. And I want to first thank the Wolf Swamp community. They have given me a warm welcome. And it's been a pleasure working with the teachers and staff and getting to know some of the students, which has been the most fun, and the parents. And I just want to echo what some school committee members have already said. It's been very impressive to see the time and effort that the teachers and staff are putting in and trying to make this hybrid model work. And it has been a challenge, but it has not been for lack of really the desire and the passion to see it done well. I don't know if you have any questions or you'd like to know more information?
On behalf of the committee, I'd like to thank you for accepting Marty's offer when he called me to tell me what was going on and gave us kind of the rundown of your history and your experience with the district, your experience in Wilbraham. It seemed like a no-brainer that you were going to be perfect for the position at this time. So thank you very much for joining us. It's a very important time for someone who knows what they're doing and we appreciate that. It's how hard it must be as a superintendent to say, oh, late August, early September, let me find a principal who knows what they're doing. So welcome aboard and we appreciate you coming back.
Thank you.
Any members? Anybody have any questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, so thank you. So as has been the case at all of your meetings recently, we wanted to provide an update with reopening. And as everyone noted, we welcome back some of our K-five learners for in-person learning this week. And again, I'd also like to offer a shout out to our administrators and the principals for the hard work and the thought and the creativity that they put in to make this as good an experience as possible. They have made adjustments to the, with the expectations we have and with the technology, the opportunities and some of the limitations that we're experiencing with the technology, which we'll talk about shortly. But first things first, health and safety. The committee has asked Health Director Beverly Hershorn and our emergency manager chief, fire chief John Dearborn, to join you at each of your meetings. And so they are here again tonight and they're more than willing to give you a snapshot of the health metrics, both locally and regionally. So turn it over, Chief Dearborn. You're a little cloudy there, but I think we can, we can see your your face. But maybe you want to kick it off. And Beverly, feel free to provide any info that would be helpful to the committee.
I apologize about the dark background. I'm trying to do this from home today. It's been a long couple of weeks. So so as of today, we have one act case in the community. We've been bouncing back and forth between one to two a day. We actually had a zero day last week. So we're making good progress. With that being said, just keep, just to the community, keep up the good work. Wear masks, social distance. If you feel ill, stay home. And really, by all the numbers, we've continued to be a great community for many weeks now. And I'd love to see that continuing in the future, but it really requires everybody to do their part. Use good judgment. The few cases we've had have mainly been travel related. In a couple of cases, I would question the judgment of how that travel was executed. So, you know, if you're going to travel to the sports team or start a family trip or people all over the country, just, you know, think that through a little bit. And, you know, the ramifications of one act can really impact the rest of the community and certainly in the schools. So and if you, you know, need any guidance on that, certainly you can reach out to myself or our health agent. You're trying to make some decisions with that. So, but, you know, just, I really encourage people to keep up the good work. And Marty, through the chair, I just want to echo a lot of sentiments about the the hard work of the administration, the school staff. I spent a lot of time in the schools last couple of weeks. You know, the teachers, the admin staff are so engaged to make everything work here. We're really down to all the nuts and bolts of this thing. We've climbed the mountain over the big issues. And it's really been an incredible experience to work with the schools and the town. And I know I've said this before your meetings, that the biggest sign of recovery from any type of disaster is that having your schools open again. And we're getting there. And I hope a year from now I'll be sitting back in my lawn chair and saying, wow, that was a ride. But it's everybody putting a brick in the wall and getting through this. So to the school committee and everybody else involved, I really appreciate all the hard work you're doing. So thank you so much.
Beverly, anything to add in terms of the local indicators, the regional indicators, or even statewide? Anything that might be helpful? Oh, you're muted, Beverly?
Follow the directions. Okay. A slight upward tick in the greater Springfield, Camden County area. And I've noticed while the deaths are down statewide, the cases are up slightly, but overall compared to many other areas in the United States, there's no comparison. And I think that's the credit of our governor who got, you know, took the lead on this. Local governments who have been very forward-thinking and everybody out there that took this very seriously. And I want to make two notes to sort of highlight the, that how well this town works together between departments. We managed to cross the town-school divide. It's a ravine, but we climb up the walls and manage to interact with you in a very cordial manner. I think it's going very well. I'm going to ask for your cooperation. We're not, public health overall is not getting the message out very well. That masking is needed when people are outdoors, but cannot keep social distancing. So if you take a walk in the woods and nobody else is present, fine. But it really is important for families to mask if they're using playgrounds where the children, it's a natural instinct of children to want to play together. And it really is important to keep that in mind on non-school hours to wear masks when you're not socially distanced from other children, to impress that upon children. So we might ask your cooperation in getting the word out on that. And I just want to let you know that we have filled up, I believe, all of the slots for the school staff to get their flu shots. We've come to the end of our line for that. So I was glad that just about every so many people took advantage of that opportunity. And they are welcome to come to any of our town clinics. And we're hoping to move forward as quickly as we can to start registrations for flu clinics for the high school, as we've done for many years. That'll come along a little bit later. It's been really challenging because of all of the COVID restrictions, needing to keep social distancing, preventing too many people being in one place at one time. So we're trying to work together to, in a cooperative fashion, to get your needs fulfilled and do it in the best way we can. There's just a lot of conflicting interests right now. I think that's just about it. I've been working with Marty on a variety of protocols. And I think there's been a lot of active engagement between myself, Marty O'Shea and John Dearborn. And I think it's going very well. It's a lot of behind-the-scenes work.
I'd say one of the things that Chief Dearborn alluded to and Beverly mentioned is that we're getting more and more granular in some of the health and safety questions that we're dealing with. And I think that's a sign that we're, you know, we've really addressed some of the biggest challenges. But also I appreciate the granularity of some of the questions that we're getting from the teachers because it shows me that they're taking these, these protocols and the guidance very, very seriously. And they want clarity on everything. And so we appreciate them asking. And Beverly and the chief and Andy Frazier have been so responsive. Andy Frazier, the COVID compliance officer, he'll be at our admin meeting tomorrow. And we'll have another, you know, fifteen or twenty questions for him that he'll help us sort through. So it's we're getting, increasing clarity every day on some of the health and safety challenges. Thank you. Thank you both for coming. Many?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Beverly. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you both.
I'm going to zoom away if there's no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I'll keep going on the reopening update. In recent weeks, you have heard from a variety of departments. You had a food service report, you had a people services report. Tonight, Nick George, our technology director, is here to provide you with a technology access and integration update. Nick might be, we're all very busy, but Nick might be the busiest man in the district right now. He's been a person in demand. And so we, his communication has been outstanding in recent weeks as we've had many teachers trying to master the technology and explore the opportunities and work through some of the challenges. So Nick has a slide deck to sort of guide the conversation and provide you with an update on where we are technology-wise. And so I'll just, if it's okay, I'll share that. I'll share that presentation now and we'll turn it over to Nick. All right, Nick.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah, if you can hear us, it's all yours.
Yep. Can you hear me okay? Sound good? So for our Fall two thousand and twenty technology update. So these are some investments that we've made. Some of these started before the switch to remote earlier in the spring, but they were ongoing. So network investments as a result of a capital project, we completely replaced all of our wireless access points and our switches that power them with the intention of providing more capacity. We didn't know how much capacity would, we didn't know how much that capacity would be needed. So the timing was fortunate, timing for anything to be considered fortunate these days. Three hundred and six wireless access points replaced throughout the school and town. That was every wireless access point. We were switching from older technology to eight oh two dot eleven AC. And what that means is it allows more devices to connect to a single access point. That was more throughput on those devices. We have one access point in almost every classroom. If there are any exceptions, there, they must be rooms that are oddly sized and they get adjacent coverage from another classroom. So all of our wireless access points were replaced, as well as the switches that are in the network closets that power them. To provide us with better management, better visibility into the traffic that we have going over our network. These investments are things that will provide more capacity and also allow us to respond more quickly and more effectively when we're troubleshooting issues that are related to wireless network problems. And also, we, in recent years, doubled our bandwidth through our internet service provider. We continue to monitor our utilization on a daily basis as we bring more students back onto campus to see where we are in that utilization. So we can make a judgment call if we have to look at other options for bringing more bandwidth into the district. But at the moment, we're doing okay and our bandwidth is doubled from what it was in previous years, going back a year or two now. Device deployments and investments, Chromebooks. So we've been investing heavily in Chromebooks over the past few years. We probably got, I'm going to speak in just general terms, about fourteen hundred devices that we built up to over the past few years that were in our existing inventory on carts. So that put us into a better position when we hit the spring and realized that we were going to have to have more devices to prepare for the fall. For the spring deployment, we had a deployment here in central office where we invited families to come in. Anyone who didn't have access to a device at home that wanted one provided by the school, we were eager and happy to provide that to them. So we distributed three hundred and eleven Chromebooks to families from our existing inventory those days in March by disassembling eleven carts throughout the district where they had previously been cart-based devices. In addition, in the spring, we deployed hotspots, five mobile hotspots to families without internet. And we have additional hotspots arriving this fall to provide for families that don't have internet access at home. In spring, we made an early call that we would need additional devices for the fall. The PO was actually submitted to the vendor on May fourth for thirteen hundred Chromebooks. Talking to other school districts, we got that order in sooner than almost anyone I've talked to, unfortunately, because access became very challenging. August eleventh, eight hundred of those devices were delivered. And then August twentieth, five hundred of them were delivered to complete the order. And of course, before then, over the summer, we're consolidating carts into locations in the building. We're disassembling devices from the carts. We're updating our inventory, checking the repair status on them, making sure they're in good order, buying replacement parts for any that have any issues that they're ready to go for distribution. And then as soon as the devices started arriving in mid-August, we started prepping the Chromebooks, the new ones, to be part of that inventory to deploy for students. So in total, thirteen hundred Chromebooks to supplement our existing inventory in order to achieve a one-to-one distribution for all students. Next slide, please. This is a picture of what thirteen hundred Chromebooks look like. We took over a conference room. Chromebooks have a lot of centralized management that you can take advantage of, which is part of the reason why schools are so popular, have a choice of schools. But there is a lot of overhead just at the transportation, unboxing, setup, asset tagging, enrollment. Kudos to Kevin Zabauer in our department who did the brunt of this work and really was instrumental in getting all these devices ready for distribution to students. Piles, we're filing up as he was bringing the boxes down and setting them up. And it was pretty impressive how quickly he was getting through them. So that's what thirteen hundred Chromebooks look like. Device deployments, we also deployed iPads. We had about five hundred devices in existing inventory. So same story there. Over the summer, we were consolidating them within the buildings, inspecting our inventory, verifying that our inventory was accurate, determining which devices might need repairs or might not be suitable to go home. We purchased an additional one hundred devices to support the anticipated need in the fall and to supplement the existing inventory. iPads have been provided to teachers and kindergarten students at this time. And the kindergarten, pre-K students will be provided iPad shortly as we wrap up some setup related to the remote management portion of those devices. And iPads were chosen as the divisive choice for pre-K and K because of certain considerations around the applications they would be using in the interaction models where it really seemed that, given our existing inventory with Chromebooks and given what students in pre-K and K would be doing, it was the right choice to provide them with the iPad rather than a Chromebook at those levels. In addition, we've also invested in some accessories. Goose neck iPad hinges are already available in some classrooms and more are arriving soon. Those are, that's the device on the far right there. Allows the teacher to kind of use the iPad flexibly and pivot it so that students in the class can see a student at home. You can use it as a document camera for showing something on your desk or something you're interacting with. It's a really neat tool. And that actually came from a teacher recommendation in the summer. I think a teacher had found that, had played around with it and tried it and was really impressed by it. And so we made the decision to get some more in and provide to our teachers. Stylist's have just arrived and will be distributed soon, probably tomorrow. We'll be sending those out to the building for teachers to use with their iPads if they don't have a stylus already. And that's kind of in the model of the iPad being something of a whiteboard replacement for staff. The stylus provides a little bit easier interaction, more dexterity. And then lapel mics I have on here for the iPad page. But in truth, that's a staff device to be used, whether they're using the iPad or not, to improve their clarity for students at home. So this should be arriving soon. Uh to improve their clarity for students at home. Uh so this should be arriving soon. Uh this is a picture of a classroom with some of the technology outfitted to it. Uh you can see in the middle there, the teacher has the iPad on that gooseneck hinge. They've got an uh projector with a wireless display so they can project from their device and the students can see what the iPad is seeing. Uh and the students are in the classroom and can see what's going on and the students at home have access to the same uh visibility that the students are seeing on the display there. Okay, in addition to device rollouts, we brought a lot of apps and services on board this summer. Uh this was a collaborative effort between the I T department. Uh we have Sandy Budger on our team who's an indispensable resource to us all. And uh really dug in deep to a lot of these tools to get them online and ready and also with super train and curriculum to. Uh help get these set up and available to staff. Uh it was a big undertaking. Uh normally, we get. Half of these kind of tools online and it's a pinch to get them online through the first week of school. Uh we had a lot more tools we brought online this week and many of them were available on the first day or two. Uh and there are some that we're still bringing online, but a lot. So over the spring and summer, we pushed out uh Chromebook web filtering for the devices that were being used at home. Uh that's extended to all the devices, all the Chromebooks that have been distributed to uh homes. Uh we also made use of some remote support software so we could connect with teachers. And in some cases, students and families to guide them through the use of their device if they're having a problem. Uh we made a lot of progress this fall on a single sign-on. Uh so we adopted clever as a district and what it allows is for our students to sign-on. With just their Google account that they already get provided from our district and in some cases, it can even be provided a barcode that they can just scan on their device. And it provides them a single-click sign-on to things like Discovery Education, iReady, iExcel, their McGraw-Hill textbooks, NearPod, Seesaw Classroom. Uh Kami, and then I list some other tools down here at the bottom. Not all of them are tied into the single sign-on yet. In some cases, the vendors don't support single sign-on yet. In some cases, the vendors support it, but said, could you please touch base with us next year? There's no possible way we could get to you at this point and that was like a month ago. So uh they're uh you know, working like all of us are with a lot more demand than we've ever seen before. And we were able to get a lot online for single sign-on. Uh new students were provided for the first day of school, their power school login information, all students' accounts were created and provisioned. And uh we also, with uh the help of Osa Nilson, our student information system specialist. Uh reconfigured Power School. She worked with uh principals in the schools to address attendance needs. Uh different state requirements for attendance reporting, a lot of considerations and nuts and bolts into the way scheduling is done in uh. Power School, so um a lot of work done there and credit to her and the teams that worked on that. Uh Zoom Google Meet meeting quality, burying the lead a little bit. So in the first week, uh we were following up with surveys, monitoring and guidance. Uh that's still ongoing. Right now, we're doing more of the monitoring and guidance part and surveys are not sending out daily because we were seeing. Uh response rates fall off and you can only survey people so many times. We wanna be um. A little bit more targeted in the surveying going forward and I'll get into a little more detail on that in a bit. Um the challenge we seem to be running into, a lot of people are asking, is this bandwidth? Uh no, and actually, actually, we were in a good place for our bandwidth needs so far, thanks to the Wi-Fi investments, thanks to previously doubling our bandwidth. Uh the trouble we're running into or the challenge in some cases is the processes in the Chromebooks. Are struggling in some cases to meet the demands of web conference sent tools such as Zoom and Google Meet. It particularly depends on the setup going on at the time, how many kids are on a call, if they're displayed in grid view and if the students are looking at all of the other students. Um if there's other tasks going on on the Chromebook while the student's working. Uh one thing that's become clear is we've been researching this and working on this is a appears to be, appears to be affecting a broad range of Chromebook models at many school districts. Uh from what I'm reading, it's really more of the rule than the exception. And that's from talking to neighboring school districts and also just monitoring, you know, Massachusetts mailing lists and other online forums for technology professionals in school districts. Uh they're all feeling this. Uh we also talked to a help desk service provider recently. Who's providing an outsourced uh family and student help desk system about what their experience has been and they. Agreed that they've been seeing a lot of calls related to these kind of questions. Um and they're saying it appears to be a combination of hardware constraints as well as just the services, Zoom and Google Meet services being burdened to an extent they haven't been before. Uh they're tracking different models of devices to try to identify trends and to provide more targeted guidance. Um but in the vein of uh service constraints, uh for example, last week, Google Drive, a core resource to. Not just education, but a lot of resources went down twice. Um so we're trying to be communicative with staff when something like that happens uh because we know that's a frustration when there's. Technology challenges in the classroom. Um so if we're aware of a broader issue, we try to notify people right away. Um but we are seeing things hitting our hardware uh demands and then even just the services at a higher level than they've ever been. So it's a case for us to be tweaking our configurations as we go forward, continuing to monitor performance and. Also, there's investments happening on the service side of things from companies like Google and Zoom to address some of these. Uh next slide, please. So what have we done so far? Based on our research, based on survey feedback, based on talking with other school districts, we've reduced the use of third-party extensions in Google Chrome. Uh one of the things that was happening in a lot of school districts, uh it's very popular for third-party extensions. These are. This is software that's not provided by Google, for example, or Zoom. Uh for people to find ones that met certain niche needs and then adopt them. Uh and one of those, for example, was a grid view extension for Google Meet. At one point, Google Meet didn't support a grid view. Uh people were sharing extensions that added this functionality, um and it was creating a lot of performance issues. So based on feedback from Google, neighboring districts and others, we advise staff not to uh encourage the use of those extensions. We also made a configuration change. To remotely remove them from all of our devices in an automated manner. Um modifying student behavior. Uh Google Meet and Zoom, uh Google Meet actually supports grid view built-in now, so they don't even need the extension, but. In the case of students using their Chromebook, we're suggesting that they do not use grid view and instead rely on speaker view, which means they'll see whoever's speaking at the moment. Most cases, that might be a teacher. In some cases, that might be a student if a student's interacting at the time. Rather than displaying a grid of sixteen student images with most of them at home, you know, not speaking. We are encouraging people not to use grid view. Uh we're encouraging people to reduce the number of background tabs. Um we've made a number of configuration changes to optimize Chromebooks. Uh there's been some emails that I've sent out to staff and students. And uh more recently, to families about changes we've been making. Again, this has been based on feedback from Google, uh Zoom. Survey feedback, neighboring districts, our own testing as we try different configurations to see what seems to work better. Um and we're also monitoring meeting logs and staff-student feedback to continue to optimize where possible. Um because we use Google Meet and Zoom uh and their kind of enterprise versions of those products. Uh we can look at meeting logs and see who attended the meeting, which uh hardware seemed to be having the most problems, what was the constraint, was it bandwidth, was it CPU? Uh that kind of thing. So we're continuing to monitor that and try to identify trends and determine whether the tweaks that we're making are helping and. Hopefully, it guides us down the path that as we kind of chip away at performance problems on Meet and Zoom. We gradually, as our efforts accumulate, achieve a more reliable meeting experience. Next slide, please. So actually, and this is, this changes uh daily, there's new information. I'll say that the uh. Tech mailing list has been very collaborative among districts in Massachusetts recently. You're hearing from everyone and what they've tried and what's worked and what isn't working, what their challenges are. Uh and you're hearing from vendors on those discussion threads as well. So I had a previous statement from Zoom. Uh and I won't read it verbatim, but basically what they were saying was they were making efforts to improve the Chrome experience. Uh and with the existing application, but they were actually also engaging in a ground-up rewrite partnered with Google to try to optimize her performance. Um and then an update from them today, uh they released a new version, a long version number there. Uh it's actually released yesterday, but it wasn't being pushed out to devices until today. Uh they specifically call out performance optimizations for many Chromebook models and the way they called that out is by listing the different processors they were targeting for optimization. The processors that they list are ones that we use in our devices, so that's a hopeful indicator. Um and they've also suggested some additional configurations that might help from an optimization perspective. Uh as far as disabling certain features that we don't make use of, including Bluetooth connectivity on the Chromebooks. Uh and some Android underpinnings that we don't make use of. So as soon as we got that information, we shared that with staff. Uh we made the configuration change as suggested, which means it will be going live to devices now. Uh that change was made a few hours ago, so we'll probably see its effect tomorrow in feedback from staff and students and families and in end-of-day survey. So it's not the first time that I've been hopeful for improvements. Uh nothing's been a magic bullet so far. Uh I think, as I kind of alluded to, really, we're chipping away at it. It's getting better piece by piece. Uh this update from Zoom was the first one that's been so specific about what it's targeting, which has been what we've also believed was the issue, the. Performance of the uh of Zoom on the processors in our Chromebook models, so I am hopeful. Uh but we won't know until we get some feedback tomorrow. Uh next slide, please. Staff and parent resources, so and family. So uh Sandy Budger, who I've mentioned, sends out newsletters for our staff on an ongoing basis and she's continued in those efforts. Um and they're targeted to staff, but they provide helpful tips, resources, tools that they can use. That newsletter has become more valuable than ever and it was always valuable, but especially now. Uh and she's also put together a how-do-I-resource page that I put uh image up in the bottom right here on the slide. A lot of how-to videos that she's accumulated or created on her, on her own, uh or internally with our assistants to make available to staff. Uh guides people through different classroom models and how to use different tools in the classroom. Um family, students and parents are welcome as always to email our helpdesk@helpdesk@longmeadow.k twelve dot M A dot U S. We have a wonderful team. Uh in our help desk department, the feedback we've gotten from staff has always been how appreciative they are of their timely support. Um and they're just a great team uh between uh Karen and Kevin and everyone else on the team over there. Uh but those two that I call out specifically bear the brunt of the help desk requests. Uh they, they've been a great resource to us all and also there's phone support available and people call in. Um and we've also been having onsite visits when we hear from parents on the help desk email. If there's an issue that we think might be resolved by a device swap. Uh we've been coming into central office and we evaluate the device and swap it out for them with a new one. Uh to try to get them up and running if there's an issue identified with the device they have. And then uh coming soon, uh this will provide more resources to our families and also allow for us to. Uh dedicate some more resources to our internal uh help requests. Uh we're bringing online a family-student remote help desk. Uh in partnership with uh an outside provider. Uh and what they're going to offer is seven A M to eight P M phone chat and remote support. For families and they're gonna be able to assist with issues related to Zoom, Google Classroom, Google Meet. Wi-Fi connectivity issues, home internet issues, Chromebook questions. Uh email, calendaring, all of the tools that we use in this district are very popular in education, so um we're meeting with them. Shortly to identify the different workflows and processes we have internally so they can kind of customize their support to us. Uh but based on feedback we've gotten from other school districts who have partnered with this uh organization, they've been very pleased with the results. It's been very helpful with their families. Uh it's been just helpful all around because um. It just allows for resources to be allocated effectively so that we can continue to support our internal users. And also families have access to that kind of off-normal hours support as well. So hopefully, it'll be a good resource to us all. We hope to have that online soon. And I think that's my final slide.
Nick, thanks so much for that and I just want to thank Nick and his team for. Their efforts, especially over the last couple of weeks to to get us up and running and and as you can see, Nick is uh. He has a great command of um technology integration. He's got a great command of the, the, the network. Uh requirements and he understands things, you know, how software integration and and the device and in at the student device level, so. Um I always joke that Nick is uh, you know, has to have a breadth of knowledge that probably doesn't compare to what other. People need to have. He needs to understand really sophisticated and complex network configurations and. And yet I also, you know, pull him into my office to help me print something every once in a while, so. Um so we appreciate, you know, just the, the amount of time and energy that Nick has. Put into getting us up and running and getting, he's been very responsive to teachers and. So willing to collect feedback and put tools in their hands that they have asked for, whether it be software or hardware, so. Nick, thanks so much. I I suspect the committee might have some questions for you.
I have one if I'm gonna call myself first. Um you mentioned that the stress level is. Some of the reasons why this is happening to Chromebooks. Is there anything on any of those forums or the uh servers that you're on that might indicate as more kids come to school? In hybrid and we have fewer students at home using computers that the, these problems might alleviate themselves?
We have gotten feedback that the performance scales poorly as more students join the call on the Chromebooks and that's mostly related to, I think. From what we've been seeing, when students try to display a grid view of all the students who are in the class. So we, I think most students have gotten that message and have stopped making use of that functionality. Um but we have also gotten feedback that even when you're not using grid view, if there's fewer people on the call, it seems to perform better. Uh so in that case, if students are, if half of the, you know, one cohort is in person. And there are fewer students on the call and the students in class are engaged, not necessarily on the call on their computer, that may be helpful. Uh but I don't mean to paint that as a magic bullet either because we've gotten feedback from the elementary schools uh this week. Um who are now in that kind of split model where some are coming in. And while, like I said, while it has gotten better, while the feedback is it's better than it was last week, that's not to say that it's perfect either. Um I will say, and I know I said that with the disclaimer that I was hopeful before, but specifically because Zoom called out performance with specific. Models of processors in their last update, I'm hopeful that that kind of targeted improvement will mean that we'll see some improvements tomorrow. Um and I notified staff in the email I sent out, we'll be monitoring our uh meeting logs to see if students are being automatically upgraded to that new version. That's something that we can monitor, so. I told them for now, we don't believe any actions needed at their time, but if that changes, if it doesn't look like devices are updating automatically, we'll let them know. We'll let them know what steps need to be taken. Um but I, it's, it, it might help to a degree, but uh I wouldn't expect that. To be a dramatic uh impact on the performance they're seeing. As far as the uh number of students on the call.
Any question? Kevin?
Just wanted to follow up on that, Nick. Thanks to you and your team for all the hard work that you've put in. Uh I'm curious for folks who happen to have a, a desktop or a laptop of their own at home. If they use that instead of the Chromebook, does that help or hurt some of these performance issues you're talking about?
In some cases, we have heard from families that they have switched to personal devices and it's running better. Uh which, it's something we've heard from people on, in our own district. It's what we've heard from us in some other districts. Um and of course, I don't blame them, you know, uh if it's gonna be working better and the student's trying to connect and you have a device ready and and you're testing, it runs better, why wouldn't you? Uh our guidance to students has been that when they come on campus, we require them to use the Chromebook that they were issued. But if they're at home and they have another device that they would prefer to use, that we don't prevent them from doing that. Um and we have found that the Chromebooks are running fine for everything else other than the Zoom and Meet calls, so when they're on campus, then. You know, the constraint in that area won't be as severe anyway. And we would very much prefer and and acquire that they use the Chromebook when they're on site. Because having the unmanaged device in a classroom environment could present a number of challenges, but. Yep, we've gotten feedback from people who've switched to different devices at home that it has uh worked better in most cases. Um it creates uh troubleshooting challenges uh to determine if things are getting better or not when. Uh the population moves to a different device, it kind of clouds some of the data that we're gathering. But again, I don't blame, I don't blame them for using what works. Um I guess what I would encourage people who have moved to another device uh and have had luck with it. Uh please key, stay in tune with the information we're shit, uh sending out about the device configuration tweaks and the update. Uh because like I said, I am hopeful that we are seeing some improvements and that we will see further improvements as a result of the update that Zoom released. Uh and it might be the case that when they go back to using the Chromebook after it updates to that new version, they find that it's no longer necessary to use a personal device. Um the other thing about them using a personal device and it working better in some cases is. Um I think I touched on this a little bit earlier, but I didn't get to, I forgot to complete my thought. Uh there is that question of bandwidth, right? People are saying, is this bandwidth related? Uh and it isn't. We've been monitoring our bandwidth usage uh over the past couple of weeks. It has not gone above a utilization that we would be concerned by. Um it has, it not, has not been the constraint and the fact that students are sometimes switching to other devices and finding better performance even while they use the same network connection. Would seem to confirm that it's not a bandwidth constraint and has more of a limitation on the device. So hopeful that that update Zoom released that targets these devices specifically will show us some benefit.
Thank you, Tiana.
Thanks, Ryan. Nick, thank you so much. I know everybody else has said it, but um just to reiterate how. Appreciated you and your team and everybody is beyond this monument or for this monumental effort. Um I, I just had a question about the sty, and forgive me, I don't know, I'm very limited in the technology. Um I had a question about the stylus and the iPad and something about it kind of serves as a. As a whiteboard. Uh the reason I'm asking is because. I'm a elementary school counselor in another district and I'm noticing that the teachers are limited in kind of like the real-time. how they can communicate with their students. They're limited by the laptop. Did you say, is every teacher getting an iPad in addition to their laptop? And can you kind of just briefly explain, like, does the stylus serve as like a whiteboard? I I thought that's what you said, but I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, and uh and to be honest, we uh got that feedback. I think the first place I heard it might have been from Kevin Shea and Sue Bertrand. As they were working on uh some technology ideas and Sue came to me and said, hey, you know, Kevin Shea has this great idea about using the iPad as a whiteboard. And when she showed me it, it was like, oh yeah, it makes complete sense. Um, we've been looking for a solution for whiteboarding, right? Because we don't have smartboards in every classroom. And it's a limitation and uh people want to be able to write on a virtual whiteboard and share it with their students and using a kind of trackpad on a laptop is not very intuitive and doesn't give you much dexterity. So yes, we provided iPads to teachers uh and there's inexpensive styluses. I think the ones we bought were less than ten dollars apiece. Um, and they're they're just, they're not intelligent styluses. They're not like an Apple pencil stylus where you got a ton of features. It's just to provide you a little bit more dexterity than your finger on the screen. And uh that iPad display can be shared both in the classroom, on the projected surface, as well as on the Zoom call. So the teacher can interact with the iPad, what they're writing can be displayed in the class for the students who are there and the students at home can see the same thing. Um, so yeah, that's what we've been um making use of and uh iPads were made available to teachers for that purpose, but also for, that was just, that was kind of like an an obvious use for like, oh, that's right, this would be a great virtual whiteboard. But of course, they're using it for other things too, uh because the iPad is a great general purpose device and not single purpose. Um, but yeah, we've been using it in combination with the stylus that we're gonna deploy uh and on Zoom and Google Meet to provide a kind of a virtual whiteboard for the students who are at home and in the class.
Well, that's fantastic. Thank you.
Any other questions for Nick? Uh, say anything more. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
You know, one of the things that I think when we're on the other side of this pandemic, I think we'll look back and realize that it accelerated around a lot of the directions that we wanted to go in, you know, whether you're talking about uh filtering requirements or remote management or one-to-one arrangements or uh enhanced bandwidth. There's so many directions that, you know, we're we're already uh starting to roll, but the the demands of the of pandemic education kind of accelerated it and and Nick has managed that beautifully. So thanks, thanks so much, Nick.
Thank you.
All right. So the uh few other items uh in terms of the reopening, I I think uh Mr. Mazza wanted to provide an update on uh busing and food service. Not sure if in that order, but uh Mr. Mazza.
Thanks, Marty. Um, so yesterday was our first day transporting students in uh cohorts for Wolf Swamp. Um, I think as I was mentioned at our last update regarding transportation, our safety protocols that students will have to follow while riding and waiting for the bus, wearing a mask at all times, uh social distancing at the bus stop. Uh due to, due to the reduced capacity, there's restricted seating, there's hand sanitizer uh available on the buses and uh windows are open, which has definitely made it a little cold the last couple mornings for students. Um, so uh we will be uh expecting and making sure students are adhering to those safety protocols as we move forward with additional transportation at the middle and high schools. Um, the ridership numbers uh are anywhere from the mid-teens for a cohort down to single digits. Um, we did, if you recall, we expanded um to allow students in grades uh seven through twelve who live more than two miles from the school to register. We weren't sure whether or not we would have the capacity, but we determined we do. Um, and I think where we currently are in terms of registered riders, it would give us that flexibility if um we bring more students back for in-person learning. So um I think we're kind of at a good place. In terms of where we are with the number of riders, we've been able to offer the uh bus transportation too. I know there's been uh some questions about the fee and I think our focus has just been trying to get it up and running. Uh we still have to get the middle school and high school uh bus passes out in the routes and we'll get those out hopefully later this week. Uh I think in terms of the fee, we can maybe uh bring that finance up at some point after we get a little deeper into the school year to determine what, you know, is appropriate amount, uh whether or not a refund will be, you know, needed or not depending upon what type of service or where they pass. So uh it's something we can look at. Not only for uh bus transportation, but maybe in the field across the, across the district. So we can look at that sometime because we get a little deeper into the school. So um right now, I'd say we're pleased with the way things are going. We'll monitor uh bus transportation and uh just make sure there's no hiccups or challenges again as we continue to add on the second uh secondary schools. Next week and the week after. Um, in regards to food service, um we we are able to extend, I think as Marty sent out in his communication on Friday. The opportunity for all students to participate in lunch for free. It is through a USDA program that uh was extended from last year. Um, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education held a few webinars last week and the week before, and I just wanted to make sure that we would qualify before we announced this, so we didn't have to kind of backtrack. Which is why we weren't able to announce it till Friday. So effective on Monday, we did uh, we did start serving students lunch and we are able to have students come through the line. There is no accountability, meaning you don't have to enter a PIN number, you don't have to provide your name to the cashier at the end of the line. Um, we are limiting the offerings right now to uh two choices at the elementary level. Uh we'll start at two at the middle and maybe three at the high school. Um, on top of the in-school service, we are gonna provide a curbside pickup. They will sit on Mondays and Wednesdays from three thirty to five o'clock at the main entrance of the high school. So you would come through the horseshoe. Um, you don't have to get out of your car. We'll bring it out to the car. Um, on Mondays, it'll be a bag with three lunches in it. And then on Wednesdays, it'll have um two more, so that students can have enough to kind of get them through the week. And uh you don't have to be a registered student in Long Meadow Public Schools. So you don't even have to have the students in the car with you. We just come up and say, I'm a student, you're having a family. And we'll provide you meals for a number of lunches for those students. So um it's a great opportunity. It is currently approved through the end of December of this year or until funds run out. Um, it's hard to say if we'll be able to extend it all the way through December. We are encouraging families who might qualify for free or reduced lunch to still fill out an application. So if and when we have to convert to our traditional operation, there's no interruption for them in terms of receiving those uh those meals. So uh we strongly encourage them to submit it and they're available either online or uh you can, you can contact their school's office if you need a copy of the the application. So um again, similar to transportation, I think we'll monitor it when they have to adjust in terms of our program and and our structure and what we're offering. Uh we do wanna uh, so far the numbers have been low. I would say they've been in the mid twenties at the elementary schools on the first day. There was a slight uptick on day two, but I think with most things, people need to kind of get comfortable with the procedures and back in the school and um I think maybe getting word out that the program is free for all students might also help with some of that participation. So I know we've moved it out until late Friday, but uh as word spreads, hopefully we'll see a little increase in participation uh across the district. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions on either of those uh, either of the programs that uh just mentioned.
Thanks, Tom. Anybody have any questions on busing or food service? Chianna?
Thanks, Ryan. Thanks, Tom. Um, Tom, just a question about the, you mentioned until the funds maybe run out. Uh is the funding for, you know, sometimes those food services, is it grant funded or is it just regular funding and does the funding, is it contingent on like, you're talking about like you know, cost for food or cost for uh labor or how, you you know, like, probably not asking this right away, but but I'm just trying to figure out what determines when the funds run out?
Um, so as best I understand it, it was an appropriation in uh one of the federal legislations associated to COVID relief. And it is a, an amount that is available across the entire, entire United States. And I think the funding's going to be dependent upon participation. So the more students that participate across the country that receive meals, uh the more reimbursement that communities will receive. So I think as participation increases or if there is an increase, the uh money will get drawn down quicker. It's not necessarily a grant particular to each state or each community, but I think it's a pool of money that's available as reimbursements are distributed to communities, they'll have to monitor the balance and determine how far they'll be able to support funding the program into the fall months. So uh hopefully they'll give us ample notice if they're gonna have to scale back uh ending the program before the December thirty-first uh date that they currently uh advertise.
Okay, thank you. And and yeah, and and I guess too, I was wondering like, you know, do we have to hit a certain number of participants in order to continue it or is that what you were just saying? Is that it's?
Nope, there's no minimum participation levels or expectations. Um, again, we, you know, we wanna support students uh in terms of uh their nutritional needs, both in school or at home. So um and we will monitor the the curbside pickup if we need to add more sites because there's an overwhelming interest or possibly expand the amount of time we're providing uh the pickup. Most certainly we'll do that. Uh it's hard to gauge even how many families will take advantage of it, so um we'll we'll do our best. Uh it will be starting on September thirtieth. We've got a little time to kind of get the the specifics of how we'll manage it and and do everything on that day. So we need it a week or so to get it up and running. So a week from tomorrow will be the first day that the pickup will be available here at the high school.
Great, thank you, Tom.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks. All right, thanks, Tom. Sorry, Suzie.
I don't have a question for Tom. I just um have a a question about the reopening. Is that okay? Or do you, do you have one?
Into it. Uh, so they, the the final sort of piece of the reopening update uh relates to the uh cohort spreadsheet document that I I had put in your packet. Um, I think it was, uh I had a discussion with a committee member who wanted to kind of get a sense of how, what the cohort distribution looked like at uh at our elementary grade. So you have in your packet that spreadsheet that shows us number of students in cohort A, B, and C at each grade level at each school at the elementary level. And so the reason I uh think it's good for you to have that is that I know that the committee has sort of uh clearly signaled that they want us to bring back a proposal at some point for bringing back uh additional students for in-person learning. And so that that spreadsheet will be a major factor in helping us make those decisions. I think one of the things that is allowing us also to kind of start to shape a proposal for you for additional in-person learning is that we obviously have a better idea now of cohort distribution that I mentioned, we have a better idea of what our staffing levels are. We have some, some now some increased familiarity with uh how to uh run the buildings with students present. We've only, you know, it's sort of a small sample size that we've, we've only had students back for in-person learning since the twenty-first, but we're becoming more familiar with uh how we can move students in in around the building safely. Uh we have, as we mentioned earlier, a better understanding of the health and safety protocols and the and the questions are getting uh sort of more and more granular. So uh I'm confident that, you know, we'll, we'll be able to bring the committee um some proposals for additional in-person learning. And just to uh for any community members that might be watching, recall that the committee had asked us to bring that proposal. To you, um uh no later than October thirtieth with a uh potential implementation, thirteenth, sorry. Thirteenth, with a uh a potential implementation no later than November second. So uh, you know, that's, that's sort of the, the, sort of the status quo and that's the status of where we are with developing that proposal. Be meeting with the administrative team tomorrow to talk about this further. I know the committee has gotten a lot of feedback uh from community members, especially those community members who have an interest in bringing back our our youngest learners uh at the, at the K two level. And so, you know, uh per that feedback and per the guidance that we've gotten from Desi and per what we know is good for students, I suspect we would prioritize uh the needs of our youngest learners for in in any proposal to bring back students for uh in-person learning to a greater extent than we have right now. So uh just wanted to give you that sort of, sort of status report on where we were with the development of the plans and provide you with that uh cohort distribution data so that you can begin to formulate your questions and come to some conclusions about what might make sense. So.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. Uh, that's a, that's exactly what I wanted to ask about. And so um thank you for for offering that update. And I, I'm wondering, given the, you know, I I know we've only been in um, we've only had cohort A back in. Um, so this week we still have cohort B to uh get into school um full-time and then we, we obviously start with the middle school next week. Um, I'm wondering um from the committee's standpoint, if it would make sense, given that you are starting a conversation already with your admin team, if it would make sense that um we, we don't have any meetings scheduled besides every I I believe we've, we've settled on a retreat date. Um, but that wouldn't be a, a meeting, you know, discussion. I don't think our next meeting is actually until October thirteenth. Is that correct? Um, I I would make a suggestion to the committee that we um meet next week, um schedule a meeting next week. And uh would that be a, a, a time that your admin team could come and kind of give us a report on um what they've seen so far and give us their, their potential proposal for um bringing students back in? Is that feasible?
So uh we certainly could have admin at your next meeting. Um, and I think that the question would be, would you want a sort of fully formed proposal or would you like it to be a sort of some preliminary feedback and some preliminary thoughts? Um, and and then we could go from there, just to get some direction from the committee on that.
I wish. Uh, I don't follow from that, I think. But you can't have anything about preliminary or alternative at this point. So I don't know how much day they're gonna have for us. I think it would only be preliminary if we did that. Suzie?
Yeah, just in response to that, I think, I I think I'm, what I was focused on was the, was the prioritization of the pre-K or of the K to two, uh K to five, you know, because they will have been in school. So having that, um, I don't know, I'd, I'd, I'd be interested to see what the other members of the committee would want. Would, would we want a, would anyone want a full proposal by that time? I, obviously, we need to be, we need to be thinking about the workload of our administrators and and our teachers for sure. And, you know, how much time it would take to, you know, orchestrate that. So I I completely understand that. I don't, don't want to put extra burden. But at the same time, um, you know, from the preliminary feedback we're hearing just from two days and, you know, not sure how the rest of the week is gonna go, I think there's a, there's a definite um urgency to some degree of of maybe moving this forward quicker than we had originally anticipated, which is why I was um glad that we um characterized those motions the way we did, that, you know, we have an we have an end date, but we, we gave ourselves the leeway to potentially move those dates up if they, if they needed to be. With, with Kevin's good, I remember Kevin being, what if, what if things aren't going well? And again, we don't have a general consensus, but I think it would, I would, it would definitely help if we, uh, knew more from the admin team especially.
Thanks, Ryan. I, I think I was thinking along with Suzie in terms of, you, you know, for this first kind of, you know, moved up meeting focusing on the K to two and, and even more particularly on the kindergarten and the first graders. Uh, since we know from the numbers, the second graders might take a little more, um, finessing, but the kindergarten and the first graders. Um, maybe seeing, you know, what could be done sooner versus later for getting them back into in-person learning.
I would agree. Um, I, I definitely don't wanna, I, I would prioritize over the K one and two, the high needs. I still think, um, that cohort of students there, we're gonna not forget. Um, but yeah, I, I, I tend to agree focusing on that with my, my sample size at my house, my, my two middle schoolers seem to, you know, that could be a, uh, longer term feasible study that could continue at the hybrid level or even at the remote level. But the, you know, the other two of my children who are in elementary school, it's pretty obvious that yes, the, the, the teachers are doing phenomenal. Um, and you know, my, my two kids' teachers have done just an excellent job, but it's, it's pretty obvious that the long-term feasibility of a first grader and a third, third grader in one room, it's not as feasible, um, you know, as a, my sixth grader and my eighth grader who, if they're able to figure this out and work, work on their own. So there is that, you know, you know, economy between the two. So I'm very much in favor to at least see what's feasible. CDC, we can do this or we can't do that. And I'd like to push it along.
Uh, Kevin?
Yeah, I, I like the suggestion, Suzie. Thank you for bringing that up. Um, the, the one thing that I feel like I'm lacking in helping to come to a decision is, I, I think we need to hear from teachers. Uh, I, I feel like we've heard from the admin team. I wanna continue to hear from the admin team. We've heard from parents. I wanna continue to hear from parents. I, I feel completely ignorant of what is going on in those classrooms from the teacher perspective. And I, I, we need to hear what is, what it's like from, from them trying to do this work and how we can help them. Um, I'm really nervous about teacher burnout. Uh, I'm, I'm, I think they're putting in a massive amount of work and it's not sustainable. And, and it's not even clear to me that the models we're talking about are the models we should even be doing. Right? It's entirely possible that we're trying something and we should be looking at Plan D instead of the stuff we're doing now. And again, I don't know what it is, but I, I really think we need their input to come to the best decision in a timely manner. Thank you.
Uh, a couple of thoughts. I think, um, I, I would, to come up with a plan by next Tuesday would be a challenge because, you know, obviously we'd wanna spend uh, some time, a lot of time, um, thinking about the health and safety, um, requirements associated with that. We would want to talk to teachers. We'd wanna engage the LEA. Uh, we would want to have the administrators go back and do that pressure testing to understand um, uh, the availability of classroom space to keep kids. I'm assuming we're still talking about six, a six-foot distance standard. Uh, so to do that right, I, I, I think I understand the committee's interest in sort of taking another look at the milestones. And I think the feedback that you've gotten from the community um, tells us that that's a good idea to take another look at those milestones in terms of the decisions. Uh, but I, I would to, to provide you with a plan that I have confidence in, that, that has been fully vetted, that I've engaged teachers in, that I've given the administrators proper time to pull together. I, I would need more time. I don't, wouldn't be able to do that for you by next Tuesday. I mean, really, we're already into Wednesday. Um, you know, it's Tuesday night now. Um, I, I do have sort of a administrative meeting planned tomorrow. But even that wouldn't be, I think, sufficient to pull all of this together. But yet I do, I do appreciate and understand the committee's potential interest in looking at those milestone dates. Uh, and to see if there are opportunities. The other thing I think, you know, in terms of the, the model right now is, you know, the, the technology challenges that Nick George briefed us on earlier, I think, um, sort of complicate the conversation a little bit. And, and Nick is hopeful. You heard him tonight uh, say that he's hopeful that we can get some of the connectivity and, and Chromebook issues, um, set aside. And so if that's the case, then I think, you know, then we can explore the, the model against that. Uh, but, but I agree with you, Kevin. If, you know, whatever instructional adjustments we need to make or, um, you know, we need to put all of that on the table and, and make sure that we're, we have a, a plan in place that is good for kids and manageable for our teachers. But I think we need, I think we need a little bit more time.
Um, so I hear the urgency for making this happen and I, I wanna reiterate that I definitely also wanna be hearing from this as soon as possible. And also to echo, um, what Kevin was saying about really hearing from our teachers about what they need to make this possible. If we were to move in one direction or another, like how things are going, what are the challenges they're facing in a hybrid model? What would in-person, more in-person look like for them, et cetera. Um, I'm wondering if we could maybe find a space between the meeting that we have scheduled right now for the thirteenth and here. Um, and we have our, uh, meeting, I think on the sixth for our retreat. Maybe we could do the Thursday after that. I realize it's only a few days, but it gives us a chance to hear, have the weekend to kind of ponder things and be ready to have a discussion a little sooner. Would that be?
Yeah, I think. I think we, we, you know, um, we're, we're not afraid of the work. We're not afraid of the, the planning. Um, definitely willing to roll up our sleeves on that. Uh, so many considerations that we have to think about, even, you know, Tom reporting tonight on food service and busing and uh, you know, we need to make sure that we've got good transportation plans in place, that we're able to, uh, move kids through lunch lines. Uh, and so there's, and then, and we also have to give parents an opportunity to potentially adjust family schedules. And as part of that, we need to understand, um, what, how families would respond to it. Would fam, would we see more families move to cohort C? Or would we see more families, um, opt out of cohort C and move into in-person learning because they, they like the arrangement more? So we'd have to, we'd have to sort of do that registration work with families to make sure that we had our class list set. And that we had the, uh, we had the schedules in place for families and for kids. So there's, there's a, a whole bunch of considerations. Some of that can happen after you, you make a decision potentially. It's not that we need to have all of that uh, completely figured out, but there's gotta be some preliminary work in that direction to understand, okay, can we do it from a transportation perspective? Are we gonna be able to move kids through lunch lines? What about arrival and dismissal? Like all those questions. And some of that, we've already, we already did this summer, but it, it's different now because there's different staffing levels. We know what our cohort numbers are. We know what our enrollment numbers are. There's a, you know, the, the picture, uh, from July to now was not a static one. It, it, there's been some moving parts that we would have to respond to. But I, 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 you know, so I'm, I'm open to, you know, if, if the committee wants to look at the milestones, I'm open to, kind of coming back with a, uh, some proposals sooner rather than later for you.
Yes, and I, um, echo, uh, Kevin's sentiments. I would love to hear from the teachers, especially, um, they are, they are on ground zero. They're, they're doing this work and it's, um, it, it's, I, I've only seen it. So I can only see that it's, that in my opinion, it's, it's challenging and they're doing, you know, an amazing job as, as, in, in the most difficult circumstances for sure. Um, and I would, um, also, I, I think Marty, what you stated about the, you know, the fact that we have, we're in a better position now to actually make these decisions probably more quickly than, you know, we, we did previously because we have some more, you know, concrete information. Yes, we need to find some other things out. Especially, you know, there are still people that I wanna be very clear and, and acknowledge and, and validate the people who are out in our community, the families who, who don't want, uh, kids to come back in, um, full-time and, and really did prefer the hybrid model. So I, I, I don't want, uh, you know, folks to think that, you know, we're just throwing that to the wayside. You know, is there a possibility that students could remain on a hybrid schedule? You know, that, that's a, that's a, that's a consideration that you'd wanna just, you know, in, include in this. Now that we do have the hybrid, and if we continue to have the remote for cohort C, then, you know, conceivably you have the remote for someone who wants to remain on that two-day, uh, schedule because of concern about, you know, um, safety, exposure, et cetera. Um, so I think, I, I think that's important. I, I do, um, maybe next week, what we could look at is a report from the elementary principals in particular, since they will, they will re- really be the only ones who can give us feedback and preliminary feedback on the first week of hybrid. Um, and then with, with the date of maybe the, the following week to, uh, come back with the full proposal. I'm just making a suggestion at that point at this point. Wanna be reasonable, but wanna, you know, move up those, those dates if we can.
Yeah, just a quick follow-up on something that Jamie said about how it, it might be possible that the model that we're operating under for the middle school and the high school, it might be the perfect model. Right? We don't know. Those kids haven't come back in person yet, but it could be the perfect model for them. But it could be that for the elementary, it's the wrong model. And I wanna make sure we're considering alternate models for those youngest learners. Because I, I just don't know if this is the right model. And, and again, I, I wanna make sure we're not ignoring that we may have a, a model that we're not currently using that could be the best one, especially for the elementary kids.
Um, I just wanted to echo this idea of, of having, having the opportunity to maybe hear different suggestions. And I do think that bringing the teachers into that conversation will be a key piece of being able to hear what maybe some of those other models could look like, or some other suggestions for those youngest learners and how to make that key. And also to make sure that there is time to hear all of that and time to plan for all of that. We've started one thing and we might have to shift at any time based on numbers, et cetera. I think more than anything for all of us as parents and community members, as challenging as all of this is right now, as much as possible, we want things to be sustainable. Um, so what I don't wanna see us do is jump from one thing into another thing quickly and then jump into another thing quickly. And so if we need a s- a smidge of time for planning purposes and to discuss and to hear back from all of our, um, stakeholders in this and really make a plan that could be sustainable for a good chunk of time barring health emergencies. Um, that's worth doing for me. I, I think our youngest learners need that. I mean, we all know small people need kind of a lot of routine instability in their lives in normal times and even more so right now. So that sustainability piece is a, a big piece of it in my mind.
Uh, hang on Marty, I just, I wanna just add something first. Um, as one of the people who voted for the original plan, I don't remember anyone making the argument that we thought remote was going to be good for little kids. So I'm, I'm kinda curious about why we're now pushing to send them back in when the big concern was health. Has it really changed that much in two days? That now you're all much more comfortable sending them in? Cause it seems like there's not a lot of data different from three weeks ago. Other than our continued really good record as a town of not having a lot of COVID. But that's been the case for a while. So I just, I mean, I was in favor of sending the K to two in the first place. I'm just wondering what the change of heart is. And then secondly, from a principal point of view, the idea of multiple plans and Plan D and Plan Z or how far we're gonna go. I can't even wrap my head around the idea of we vote for the idea of another plan in October, then I might completely lose my mind. I don't disagree with Kevin's point, which is this might not be the best plan. Yeah, but if we, I don't think we can keep changing it. And it's again, two days of hybrid. We started remote, we've done two days of hybrid with only elementary kids. So I just wanna, I don't wanna meet just to hear from the, the only administrators that have had kids in buildings yet. I would, my preference is just to give it maybe another week and maybe have a meeting on the eighth, like Nicole was suggesting, so that we can at least here add the middle school to it. But at the moment, there's just, there's just not a lot of difference. Other than some people are finding that it's not really good economically for little kids, but we already knew that. That's not, that's not new information. I don't think anyone thought it was going to be good for those kids. It was a safety thing more than anything. At least that's how I remember it. Marty?
So I'm, I'm wondering, when we talk about the model, are we talking about the sort of more of the instructional approaches? Are we talking about the, the, sort of the more um, the, the structural framework, you know, the, the hybrid model itself, you know? So I'm, I was just looking for some clarity on that, but um, I do think we need to, um, understand that the teachers will regularly be making instructional adjustments and gain comfort with the technology. Hopefully we get some of the technology kinks worked out. Uh, but I would also wanna acknowledge that there are aspects of educating during a pandemic that uh, will be, will always be with us. In other words, as long as there are any students that are remote, uh, whether it's because they choose to be in cohort C or because it's a, a remote day Wednesday, or it's a hybrid model, uh, that's always going to be a challenge. And, and, and we, yeah, and we all know that educating students in person is is preferable. We, we would all rather have the students here. And but, you know, like I said, we're, we're willing to do that hard work and roll up our sleeves and, and bring the committee back some ideas if that's, if that's the consensus of the group. Um, happy to, happy to do that.
I just wanted to say that, uh, I think it's important that the community members should, um, does realize, uh, the challenges, especially with K to two in terms of the, uh, the current model. Um, and we do understand that and are trying to think of ways to make that better. Um, and we read all the emails and appreciate all the feedback. And we'd like to have that, you know, to continue. I'm wondering, um, Marty, what do you think the best way is for us to get feedback from the teachers?
I think, well, I, I might ask, what type of feedback are we looking for? Are we looking for feedback on, on the potential to bring back additional students for in-person learning? Are we looking for feedback on the, uh, the instructional approach that we're using under the hybrid model that we have? Those, so how we gather that? There might be two different things depending on what specific questions we might have.
I think, um, just in response to a question that Ryan posed, what's the difference between three weeks ago and, uh, now? I think the, um, some of the questions that I have for, for the teachers is how much instructional time are they actually losing in terms of really supporting children in learning? Um, versus, you know, what they would normally be able to accomplish. And yes, I know that, you know, during if, if students were to come back and we didn't, you know, choose a different model, um, and we still had students in cohort C, there would still be students in cohort C. But the, the quest- But the, the question still remain, you know, how could we redeploy, you know, can they envision redeploying, um, their, their blue dots, their little pods of teachers differently? You know, those kind of questions. I, I, you know, there's been concerns and, and it's one of mine as to how much instructional time students are actually getting. Especially when they're home, but also when they're at school. Just based on the constant transitioning of, of back and forth and then attending to the routines and, um, transitions in the classroom, what's happening on the other side with the students in the remote environment? I think, I think that's a, that's a fundamental question that needs to be asked for, for the youngest learners who really don't have the ability to just like, okay, I'm going to continue on my work now, when they're really not given any work to do because they're six or five. And that's not, but teacher's fault. I don't, I don't mean in any way, shape or form to indicate that that's, it's just how, how much, how is this sustainable with, within the goals that we have for our children to actually, you know, meet standards, meet, meet, you know, expectations of learning by the end of the year? That's, that, those are some of the questions I have, but it's also workload. You know, what, what, what is this doing to you as, as an educator? And how are you able to, you know, manage all of it or not? You know, what's, where are you, where are things falling off that you need to attend to? You know, answering the phone in, in the class when you've got kids. It's just, there's a lot that goes into all of that. And I'm talking about the, the classroom phone, somebody in the school is calling you and, and you've got kids on screen and you've got, you know, kids in front of you and how do you manage all of that?
And then Bronwyn?
Yeah, Ryan, I, I think your questions are, are good ones, absolutely. And to me, I look back and, and, and time is weird. But I think it was a month and a half ago that we voted. Right? I think it was August 6th that we voted. And I was one of the people who said at that time, like, I'm really nervous about the trends and how we're doing. The trends have been amazing, right? And again, I think what the chief said today is spot on. The community has done an amazing job. And it seems clear to me that we are at a very sustainable place with our numbers. And that's different than a month and a half ago, right? And so I think that's, for me, that's part of it, right? It's been a huge effort by the community to get us to a place where we can have this discussion and safety. Like we're in a great place, we've been in a great place, we continue to be there. If things continue, we need to figure out a way to, to get more kids back in school and the youngest learners, absolutely. Um, so I think that's, that's the primary thing for me. It's been an amazing run of doing well and, and hopefully we can keep that up, right? So I think that's important. And so that, that's at that point. And then just to make clear, I, I, I think it's important to recognize, like, we can't change things really quickly. I think, and I, and I want to make sure people understand that's not what I'm saying. What, what I want to make sure we're doing is that we're planning so that we can change when we have the time to do it, right? So I, I, I think your point is a good one, trying to figure out what to do after only a week of kids in school. Like that seems too short, right? I, that makes perfect sense to me. I, I think we, if we think about when we said like, you know, starting to have more kids in school in November, whatever it was, that seems too long, right? So if we can come up with a compromise, that would be a really good thing. And I also think to your point about my like, you know, maybe we need another plan. I, I think that's longer out. I'm not imagining saying to Marty like, oh, no, 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 we need a, a different plan on October 13th. I, I'm thinking about it from my sort of science centered brain where everything that I do is an iteration. So I want to make sure I'm, I'm, I don't, I hope I'm explaining myself clearly that I'm imagining that we're trying to do, get more kids in as, as stage one. Stage two, which is further out is, are we doing the model right? And that may be a discussion that we have in November. I, I, I don't know, but I'm, again, hopefully I'm explaining that clearly and it's not as chaotic as it may have sounded when I first said that. So anyway, I hope that clarified.
Thank you. Yes, it, it scared me the first way. And actually the, the idea of it being a long-term project for the teachers, with the administrators makes a lot of sense because we think that this can continue or happen again. So figuring out the best way to do it from in the school makes a lot of sense. Bronwyn, you got a question?
As far as getting feedback from the teachers, if we didn't meet next week, would it be possible for us to maybe, um, have access to their feedback at some point? If we, if we were going to meet the following week and get an in-person report from admin? I'm just wondering, or it might take a little bit longer?
Well, my, my expectation obviously is any, you know, that administratively, we're, we're, whatever we bring forward is, is representative of the interests of the staff that, that we're, you know, as administrator, I always feel like my job is to make sure that teachers have the time and the resources and the instructional framework and the professional development that, you know, we're only as good as they are, right? And so part of that is time too, and giving them some time to figure this out. If you think, but you know, in a normal year, the first couple of days of school are always a little wonky anyways, right? You're, you're trying to figure out how many kids, who's, you, you're trying to figure out your bus routes. You're trying to figure out your arrival procedures. You're trying to, uh, set up your classroom routines, you're, you know, so it's, it's been, it's been that this year plus all the technology changes and the new instructional model. And so, I mean, we'll, we will, we'll, you know, as an administrative team, we'll certainly be, be gathering feedback from our teachers. I, you know, I can tell you when I call the principals, they're never in their offices because they're out in the classrooms kind of trying to understand that the student experience and the teacher experience. So again, is it, is it, are you, are you interested in learning what the teachers, how the teachers feel about bringing back additional students for in-person learning? Or are we interested in understanding, hey, how, how's the technology been? Or how's the time on learning been? And those are two very different questions and, so I, I'm just, I'm wondering how, what, what specific feedback?
I think both of those things would be super helpful if that's feasible.
Yep.
But the time on learning is, it could be different from, for a lot of different teachers, but I assume it's going to be about the same. But, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm glad Kevin brought that up because, you know, we have heard from a lot of people, but we do need to hear exactly from them. And maybe they have some ideas that, you know, we're not thinking of. And when they, if they complete a survey or speak to their principals and they get that information back to us. Maybe that can be useful as well.
Yeah. Yeah, incorporate that into, you know, if, if there is a night where, where if I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, where the principals come and give you some feedback, we, we would want them to be the voice of their educators as well. And however, however they do that, whether they're gathering it, you know, through anecdotally or through surveys or through their own observations. But however it is, we, we would want them to represent what their, what the teachers are experiencing and, and what it's like for student learning. But again, I, I think, um, I mean, I think you, you all know that I'm interested in bringing our youngest learners back in for in-person learning. That's where we started this conversation back in the summer. I go back to what Ryan said, it, you, you need to, I, I know we've been hearing from community members and I appreciate that. And I completely honor and respect what they're saying. And that's, I think, I think it's been good to hear because it has made this conversation more urgent, right? But I also want to go back to the health and safety issues that once we bring back students for full in-person learning, let's say four days a week, we have moved away from the cohort model at whatever grade levels we're doing that with. And so are we prepared to move away from the cohort model? We, we, I was in July and I'm, I'm still prepared for that. But that was a big part of our discussion back in July and August is, was that, that, that cohort model. And once you move away from the cohort model at those grade levels, now you're, you're not limiting transmission potentially. So that's what we have to, I, you know, we have to make sure we're still putting those health and safety considerations first. Again, understanding that I, my mind hasn't changed really in terms of how important I think it, really thoughtfully and with the health and safety considerations still at the forefront. So like that, that's what you'll, you know, that's, that's what I, I want to make sure that we, that, that we continue to put at the forefront of this. Again, where I stand on this is I'm interested in bringing to you a proposal to bring back our youngest learners. You know, specifically what that looks like, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to say that tonight. But we will be soon. But again, understanding that we, we got to make sure that we're thinking about health and safety. I, I, I'd want, I'd want this, this plan to be fully vetted by, you know, I'd want to bring back the reopening task force. Um, I, I, I plan to pull that group back together again. I think I want to make sure that we're engaging our health professionals. We had a good suggestion frankly from the community member about, you know, engaging some of the, uh, local pediatricians. So I think, you know, that could be part of it as well. So I, I just want to make sure that we're approaching it thoughtfully the same way we did, uh, back in August. With the goal though, to bring back our, our youngest in-person learners, our, our youngest learners in person, so.
Thanks Ryan, thanks Superintendent. Um, I just wanted to, to follow up on, on Bronwyn and I'm not sure who maybe brought it up first, but in terms of what I would like to see as feedback from the teachers and the educators, definitely, you know, I get like the, you know, their feedback on what's being asked of them, you know, logistically and self, self-help and safety and instructionally. Um, but I think the idea of, you know, our, our teachers and educators are like super creative. So the idea of what ideas beyond what we're asking of them is, is truly important. Uh, and to Bronwyn's point, and I think maybe Kevin also, um, so, thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to add a little more for the idea of things we might want to know from educators as well. Going back to that piece of health and safety, that is such a huge component of it in my mind. Again, back to that sustainability, we've had low numbers in town. We want to keep those numbers nice and low. We want things to be successful. If we're going to bring back more learners, then let's do that in the safest way possible. So to that end, I'd love to hear from them after they've had a little bit of time with small groups in the classroom. How are the protocols working out? How are they finding, especially with really little, really small students? Keeping everybody, how's it, how's it all working? How are they doing with getting everybody on board with the protocols with keeping track of that many small people in a space? How's that going? And if there was to be more students added into that mix, what would be their thoughts on that? What would be their thoughts on how we could best make that happen? What did they see as the most successful way to introduce more students if that's possible? Do they need more space? Do they need more supplies? What, what supports might they need if we were to introduce new students to that mix? Because I'm sure it's already, it's always a lot to have a lot of small children in a classroom and then to add in all these extra new protocols and new things that you're trying to teach them and keep them on track with just ups the demand on our teachers. So I would very much want to hear from them what they, what that looks like for them if more people are returning.
Just wanted to add one more thing. After Marty shared the, uh, the class sizes with us, uh, I think that was helpful. I guess, and you don't have to answer this tonight, but one question that I would want to know for when, admin comes back for the proposal is, if we did that for say K to two, if that was part of the proposal, would we still be able to keep the students six feet apart now that we know like the, the numbers? I know there still could be some movement, but in general, how, you know, is that feasible still?
Well, I, I'd say that we would want to commit to that six foot standard still, you know, unless, unless there seemed to be a, a medical consensus otherwise, or unless this committee was comfortable with the, the three foot standard. But I think you certainly, you know, certainly our educators have made that, that clear that that's important to them for their own health and safety. So I, I, I'm not aware of any Massachusetts districts that have moved away from that six foot standard. So I, unless the committee directed us otherwise, any proposal we bring back would be reflective of that standard.
Okay, I just wanted to double check to make sure, because that is definitely something you want to stick with. But the numbers are a little larger maybe than some people thought, I don't know.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of grade, you know, a couple of spots, second grade where it, it might be challenging or our numbers have popped a little bit. And it only takes a small number of students to make it impossible to get everybody in a particular classroom. You know, you could, you could go from, I'm making this up, but you could go from, all right, we can get, we can get 18 in, but if that number becomes 20, uh-oh, we can't get those addition, it's, it's tight with 18. So, so that's what we have to look at is the new enrollment numbers and, and do the pressure testing there. The other thing I'd say just quickly on the, on the six foot standard is, you know, one of the things that's become clear to us and that, that we're getting comfortable with is that the close contact is defined as, um, being inside of six feet for 10 minutes or more. And so I think our, we understand that, uh, children can have sort of, uh, incidental contact or they can have, it can incidentally be near each other and educators can incidentally be near students without compromising our health and safety standards overall. So that six foot standard is, is not a, you know, uh, at every moment at all times, because you wouldn't be able to educate young children if, if that were the case. And that's, that's something that I think we, we've gotten additional clarity on. I think Kevin or somebody made the point earlier, maybe Suzie said, there's more that we know now, you know, than, than we did, uh, back on August 6th or certainly back in July when we were putting together the original proposal to bring all K two students in for in-person learning. So maybe I, I think it's a matter of just sort of pinning down what you're, if, if it is a revised timeline, sort of pinning that down and, you know, we'll, we'll roll up our sleeves and get to work. And it, it's a timeline to present the proposal and then it's a timeline for potential implementation. Uh, I would say, Jamie mentioned this earlier, I just want to circle back to it around, um, high need students. I would ask that you give Jean Fontaine, our people services director, the sort of the latitude to, you know, make some, uh, strategic selective decisions to, uh, to bring back students that we've identified for additional in-person learning. And, and, and in those cases, it might not be a sort of systemic cross-grade, cross-district type of arrangement. But I would want you to know that, that, or, or give, kind of understand that Jean really ought to have that flexibility to identify certain students to bring back for in-person learning. So just want to be fully upfront with that. And, and I think that would go a long way to address what Jamie has talked about in, in recent meetings. I, I, I hope it does at least.
No, thanks for saying that, Marty. I think that's a great thing and I personally have no problem with Jean leaning forward as far as she feels appropriate. You know, between both you guys and I, I just think it's a, it's a group of students I personally think are going to get left behind if, if we don't do it now. Another half year of school without getting them what they need, I don't think is right. So I, I feel very confident telling her, you know, let her make the best decision for the family and for the kids. And I, I personally don't have an issue with it at all. Obviously, I'm always speaking for myself.
In a second, Gianna, if I can make a suggestion on the original point that got us talking about all this. So if we're looking at, uh, adding a meeting where we can get some information, and again, back to my point of, we don't have a lot from, and we're not going to have a lot from middle school and we're going to have basically none from high school. Do you think it makes sense to have on the eighth, uh, a report about K two from those administrators and hopefully those two? From those administrators and hopefully those teachers as well about the academics and the safety? And then keep our thirteenth for the rest? Because the rest of the grade levels will have been in by then and we can get the original plan update. So maybe on the eighth, if we hear something that. Excites us into thinking that we can actually move faster on K two, then that can be done five days later on the thirteenth. But the thirteenth gives, uh, more time, uh, and at least more data for us to hear about for the, the rest of our levels. I don't know what your thoughts are on that. I still think doing something next week is just too fast, that's all.
It's the same, thumbs up, I think that's a good deadline.
Any other thoughts? Are you listening, Jamie? You're staring at me like I'm not sure.
Can you say it again?
I blocked you out, sorry. And you're the closest to me.
Yeah, it's really sad, sorry about that.
So the idea that I just suggested is maybe on the eighth and the reason the eighth is because we have our retreat planned for Tuesday, sixth. So if Thursday, the eighth was a report from administrators and teachers for K two. So we could have a really good look at just that level and whether or not we can bring them back sooner. And then keep our meeting for the thirteenth for the, the rest of the levels, for the rest of the grades to see again, same idea, academics. And.
Is that to provide the high school the last time, do you think?
They, they really are, it's the young ones who are the most difficult. So if we give that, maybe give them their own special meeting on the eighth. And it gives Marty and his team and the teachers time to really give us that information that we want. That was my suggestion. Marty?
So I think, I think that would work for us if that's acceptable to the committee. Uh, and then if we could, uh, you know, potentially suggest a, you know. Depending on what we gather from teachers and from the administrators and, and how this is looking from a health and safety standpoint. We, we potentially, if the committee, uh, wanted us to, we could potentially look at. And depending on the plan, we could potentially look at a date sooner than November second. Help me to, is that, I don't know if that was sort of inherent in what you're talking about or.
Ryan, can. Uh, can I just ask, so. So in hearing, you know, Jamie's point and everybody I think is in agreement, um, about the, the students with higher needs. And then Superintendent's explanation of Jean, um, having leeway to, to do what she, you know, knows to be best and, 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 you know, appropriate. Can we ask that Jean also, you know, so I know we're talking about on the eighth, looking at the K to two information? Can we also make it so that Jean presents her ideas about the higher needs students at that time as well?
I like that idea and I think if we're talking about elementary and middle. The answer could be yes, because they will spend more time. I don't want to use the high school kids as early on, because they're free day. But since we're following Marty, do you think?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we can, um, and, and there might frankly be some students that she would identify possibly even before that date, you know. Uh, but, but certainly she could be part of that conversation on the eighth.
Yeah, just because, thank you Superintendent, just because, you know, we're talking about the urgency here, you know, and, and. You know, again, I agree with Jamie and you all, in, in terms of the highest need students are urgent. Um, so it'd be great if she identified some before the eighth, but, um, it would be also valuable if. At that meeting on the eighth, she presents her ideas.
Great point, thanks, Gianna.
Yeah, I just have, uh, just one last, uh, comment. I think first of all, Marty, thank you for being flexible and thank you to the entire administrative team for being flexible. Um, I think, you know, a month and a half ago, I felt the same way as Kevin. I felt as though this was, there were circumstances that didn't, in my opinion, make me feel confident that a, a return. Um, full-time at, at that time was, was in the cards. But, um, we're, we're in a different place now and, um, I'm, you know, I'm cognizant of the needs of. All of our learners, of our entire community, of, of the parents, of the educators. And so I'm, you know, forever appreciative of, of the work, of, of the flexibility that you're showing to, to be able to do this. And, um, and being willing to, you know, kind of roll with, with all that's, that's been done. And while I understand that, you know, you need the time for October eighth, I just, you know, hope we can do, hope we can. Look with an eye towards implementation as soon as possible if there's a, a proposal that is workable, feasible and safe. So thank you.
As, as been the case recently, you've heard enough from me, so I'll pass.
So for chair report, the only thing that I would like to add, I'm going to echo what the chief and Beverly said earlier. Um, which is the idea that as a community, if we want the kids to get back in school. We have to be paying attention to the, uh, the rules and the procedures that the health experts have been suggesting for months. Uh, which is that masks work and avoid big gatherings. There's a town in Eastern Mass who recently, um, a family or two, uh, decided that they would throw a party for all the kids. And now the high school shut down for two more weeks at least. So people in town, if you actually want the kids to come back in, you have to keep following the rules that have gotten us to, to the point where. The chief can come on and say, one case, we actually had a day of zero. So everyone, please be vigilant, keep up the good work, which you've obviously been doing. And now as we're getting kids in for the first time in small rooms where they haven't been. With lots of other kids where they haven't been, we need to be really, really vigilant for this to work. We want it to work, everybody on this committee wants it to work, so please pay attention to that and let's help keep it, uh, going in the right direction. Uh, student rep Armin is not with us, so do we have any reports for LPVC?
Uh, we're meeting tomorrow, so I'll have one for next time.
Fantastic, energy and sustainability, negative and open space. And we do not have any subcommittee reports. We don't have any ongoing business. Under new business, uh, before we get to what's on the agenda, if I can add something. During our executive session, we were presented with an MOU, which the LEA approved earlier today. We will now have to add this to our agenda in order to approve that MOU. Could possibly read a motion to that effect.
I move on the recommendation, the superintendent that the school committee approved the MOU with the LEA dated September twenty-second, twenty-twenty and authorized the chair to sign it.
The motion is, is there any discussion on the MOU? See, now I'll call for a roll call vote, Gianna?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
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 Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. And again, another big thanks to the teachers in our district for all the hard work they're doing, we appreciate it. Next on new business is the MASC resolutions.
So each year, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees issues a, uh, set of resolutions. That local school committees may or may not consider, uh, for adoption. And the resolutions are, uh, relate to, uh, curriculum matters and student assessment and, uh, student financing and. Um, uh, school funding. And there are several, I think there were ten from, that were released by the MASC for committees to consider. In a normal year, what could happen would be a committee would vote on each of the resolutions. And then if any committee members happen to be attending the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, uh, conference in November. That, that committee member would be sent as a delegate to represent the vote of the local school committee. So the, the resolutions are in your packet. Uh, often I've, I've seen committees simply, uh, review them and use them to sort of make informed. Individual decisions about matters. I've seen committees, uh, weigh in on only some of the resolutions. It's really up to you as a committee as to whether or not you want to, uh, sort of just review them individually or tackle them as a committee. I will say it, your, your time is valuable and precious, uh, and you've got a lot of important matters in front of you. And, and I think it's really up to you whether or not you want to commit the time to these resolutions. There still will be an MASC November conference that will be done virtually. And at that conference is when the entire state assembly would take a position and vote on the resolutions that are before you. So, uh, I think it's really up to you as a committee in terms of how you want to handle and respond to the resolutions that are in the packet.
Want to make a decision basically for us whether or not you wanted to have drawn out discussions on these? Or if you just wanted to look at them and think about them and maybe just share an opinion at a later date before, obviously before the November meeting? So I kind of leave it up to you guys, what you, uh, how you want to do that, problem?
Uh, I agree with your, uh, instinct that, uh, we have these here, we can review them individually. And then next time we get back together, um, if people want to discuss certain ones more in depth, we can do that. And we still have time, um. Before having to send the information in. Just my thought.
Seeing a few nodded heads, anything anyone wants to address right now or we can wait till a later date? Oh, I'm sorry, Gianna, go ahead, thank you.
Thanks Ryan, I just didn't know if we were just supposed to say out loud, I, I agree with Bronwyn and, and with you and, and would love to take time to look at them.
Fantastic, thank you. Um, do we have to talk about the conference? Like, we don't have to like, play it as much as we've had in the past because we're not going there.
Well, if anyone would like to attend, I'm sure Diane could, uh, register you for that virtual conference. As we've heard otherwise, Diane.
Yeah, so the way I'm understanding it is you would still need to vote one person to be your voting delegate. The, uh, delegate form, it was issued back in March when they thought they were still going to have the actual conference, uh, conference. And I don't recall what the deadline was on it, um, or submission. So if somebody is going to actually virtually go to it, it's on November seventh at one o'clock, it's a Saturday. So you can all think about that and we'll have it on a future agenda.
Oh, feel free to fight me for that if you want. Nobody? Okay. Uh, any next on new business?
Sure, and just quickly on that, any number of committee members can attend that virtual conference. And then you, you don't even need to, you don't, you're, you're not required to have a, a delegate, a voting delegate. You can attend the conference without attending the, uh, the portion where the whole assembly votes on the resolutions. Uh, so the next item, uh, is, uh, anti-racist education in LPS. And, uh, I know this is a, uh, a matter of concern to the committee. And I'll just get some feedback. Uh, it's a matter of concern and interest to the committee. And we thought, as you begin to put together your goals for the year, it might be good to take an inventory of some of the work that were. That's currently underway in this area. And so Sue has put together a, uh, sort of, there was a outline in your, in your packet. And she's put together a slide deck to update you on some of the anti-racist education work that's underway in Lion Meadow. And some of the work that's underway to promote equity and access in Lion Meadow as well. So Sue, I can share the slide deck?
I just, yeah, I emailed it to you just recently, so if you have it, that'd be great. Not sure if I can share or not.
No, I'll pull it up. All right.
Thank you. So you can, uh, I'll read that title yourself, so we can go to the first slide, Marty, that'd be great. Um, this slide talks about our partnership with, uh, what we, we affectionately call CLE, it's a center for leadership and educational equity. And we partnered with them last year actually, thinking we would have two full years of good time with them and no COVID. And then along came COVID, so we've had to spread out some of our events with them. But, uh, at the, close to the beginning of last year, we started to meet with them as an administrative team. To, um, talk about what we wanted from them as far as equity, um, solutions for the school was. And we, um, kind of decided a path together and, um, in that path, we, we sent them lots of data. We sent them MCAS data and EWS data, which is early warning data. Uh, we looked at start student learning opportunity data, evaluation data, radar data, which is kind of budget data. It indicates how much money we spend kind of per student group sometimes. We looked at, at, uh, postgraduate information, so they have lots and lots of data from us. Um, this summer, they were able to provide some personal development for, uh, our entire staff. Um, trying to get them ready to start having productive conversations on the topic of equity, uh, which we got great feedback from. Uh, soon we will have, soon tomorrow, we will have focus groups, uh, for students, parents and educators run by CLE. Uh, we had a really, uh, we, we put an all call out last week for the volunteers and we were over-volunteered in every group, so that was great. We were able to open up a second parent group and still we had to leave some parents off. Unfortunately, we were forced to put names in a paper bag and kind of pull them out. But, um, thank you to the community for really stepping up to the plate with that. So, um, we are not involved in those focus groups that they are facilitated by CLE, but we will get the feedback from them. And then, uh, they'll take all of the information they've gathered from the schools and from the data that we've sent and from the summer work they did and from the focus groups. And, uh, gather a steering committee together where the, um, community members, educators, administrators, committee members here. Um, we'll probably be asking the volunteers for a couple of committee members for this. Um, we'll get together and kind of look at the data, study it, and, uh, the committee then will make recommendations for moving forward. We'll get a final report from them, uh, with the action items that you've brought us forward. Uh, and Marty, feel free to jump in because I've worked alongside with them.
I know, I appreciate you pulling us together, that, that collaborative, um, committee and the, the fifth bullet down there. That, that's a, that's a large group, I think around twenty, I think five votes that CLE will pull together. So hoping that, uh, as Sue said, some, uh, committee members would volunteer their time for that. And looking forward to, to that, that'll be sort of the culmination of a lot of the work. Because they'll, they'll help us sift through the data and the, the identified themes that are coming out of these focus groups. Um, so looking forward to pulling that, that group together, I forgot how many times.
Four meetings, I believe.
Four meetings.
Four, yep, four, four, I'm calling it a steering committee meeting.
Yeah, it's probably a better phrase, yeah, yeah.
Um, then, uh, next slide, please. And, uh, they have worked, these two groups that we work with, this, um, we have another partnership with a better lesson, uh, that I've talked. that I've talked about in the past year, but they, they work really well with CLE. They know each other, actually. But they will be providing us with some professional development on October 13 specifically related to anti-racism. And specifically targeted for our community, we're working closely with their developers based on our community demographics and our makeup to make sure that they're presenting their professional development in the best way possible. So in the morning of October 13, that's a full PD day for us. They will spend a couple of hours with all of the staff in the district talking about systemic racism and identifying how it shows up in our schools. And then in the afternoon, our school-based administrators will lead discussion. And we're still kind of flushing that out. We had a long conversation with them today about what those afternoon discussions would look like, should look like. We want teachers to come away with an action step or two that they can really start implementing in their classrooms. So working closely to figure out the best way to get to that end game. We also are going to have eight educators, probably one at every elementary and middle and two at the high school, who are interested in really supporting anti-racist instruction to partner up and get some bi-weekly coaching from The Better Lesson Company. And hopefully they'll, they'll be our champions, kind of our warriors going forward and spreading the news in their own buildings. I don't want to say train the trainer exactly, but something similar to that. And then we will follow up with some additional professional development on April 1 because we got the day back. The coaching, the coachees, I guess, the eight members of the coaching cohort will lead a session in the morning. We'll have to agree to that session leading before they get picked for coaching. But just to talk about what they've experienced in their classrooms and the successes that they've, they've come across and share with their colleagues. And then in the afternoon, we'll have another two-hour seminar on anti-racism for K to eight instruction and then the fundamentals for nine through 12. So I'm kind of starting to think about, CLE is helping us to identify our gaps. And Better Lesson is kind of trying to, is helping us formulate plans to close them. So they, if they're, they've been really great picks for us as a district.
So that's, that's a good way of saying it. It's sort of like our work with CLE, they're, they're sort of helping us hold the mirror up to ourselves. And to have us do that sort of across district, across community reflection. And then A Better Lesson will kind of fit, come in and sort of where the, where the rubber hits the road and begin working with teachers to think about sort of classroom, classroom level practice. So I think that's, that's a good way of thinking about that. Just a quick side note, A Better Lesson was founded by an LHS grad, former student of mine, who has, has done very well for himself. He started as a teacher and launched this organization to support schools mainly through a coaching model. They've actually been doing online coaching for a number of years. So they're, they're really well positioned to help and support districts during the pandemic. So they're doing, they're doing great work. And Sue's been very, very impressed by A Better Lesson as, as an organization that, you know, that contributes a ton of value.
Yeah, I asked for the hometown discount today, but they, they passed on that offer. And we always do in-house PD throughout the year. We have, I'm hoping to get one of our administrators to lead a high-quality teacher share based on the book Cultivating Genius. I don't know if anybody's heard about that. That's kind of a gold standard for anti-racist teachings in the classroom. Goldie Muhammad is the author. Highly recommend it. It's really phenomenal. We'll put an all call out for educator professional growth courses. They're led by educators. And then we'll support staff in attending our local collaborative workshops on equity and social justice, anti-racism. With COVID, a lot of the in-person really great workshops are not happening. So we'll have to keep our eye out to see what there, what there is available, make sure it matches up with our goals. Our peer leadership and our student involvement is ongoing as always. At present, there's a group of students who are researching and developing anti-racism resources for our website. They rightly so noticed that there wasn't a lot there for students to take a peek at. So they are doing that. We'll vet what they've researched before we put it on the website. But they're working on that. What have they been in school two weeks and they're already rolling? They're also hoping to develop a video to recruit diverse applicants for employment here. I think that was something that Marty and they started working on last year. And then again, we got with the virus and they had to stop their work on that, but.
So just a quick note, so peer leadership is a, is a class at the high school that's taught by Shelley Warren, familiar based all of you. And it's actually some of the students had the idea, had come to her and to Tom Landers to talk about the diversity of our, of our staff, of our teaching staff. And some students had the idea sort of, it caused us to think about, how do we, how do we represent ourselves? And are we representing ourselves in such a way that candidates from, candidates of color would be willing to apply? And so we thought that if we put student voices first and if we can kind of prominently put them on our website with some videos that they develop that basically say, this is, this is who we are as a learning community. This is who we want to be and we want you, you applied to one of our public schools. So to make it a welcoming experience for our applicants. So I'm excited to, to work with Shelley and the, and the peer leadership group on that. And that's a, that's a grassroots student idea that, that we're, we're going to nurture. So looking forward to that.
And the same group is also in the midst of developing an anti-racist pledge for K through 12 students. So they sent us a draft today of it. And it has to be something simple for, you know, our kindergarten, first grade students to understand and commit to. But a voluntary pledge that will really maybe increase commitment to this anti-racism in the schools. And then you, I talked to Sandy McDonald today also. She's the co-chair of the Unity Club. And they are getting ready to be up and running when students come back to LHS. They're going to start with some conversations about just some injustices that they, they're seeing lately and they're ready to go with that. So I don't know what is happening and has happened.
I think, I think where that piece might fit in is, you know, we continue to be concerned about social media posting. And, you know, we had an incident this week, as you're familiar with, where at middle school level, where a student had put up a racist video. And Beth Nelson, that's what William, she responded quickly to it and investigated it. But I think we, we continue to be concerned about, you know, what students are doing in unsupervised spaces, you know, where there are not adults necessarily involved. And that could be virtual spaces or actual spaces here in our buildings. So we want to continue to be attentive to that. And I think if we can get students to be reflective of that through the anti-racist pledge or through other, other means, then I, I think that will, will help with that. So there's, there's a lot of, a lot of gaps that we're, we're looking to address and fill and kind of bringing, helping, putting students in position where they can be leaders in this conversation. I think is really, really critical because I think kids frankly listen to each other sometimes more than they listen to adults. So we, we want student voices to be front and center as we, as we move forward.
That's a good lead in. Can you, oh, you get it. So thinking about anti-racism in the curriculum, it's something that I, I'm passionate about, but I'm certainly not an expert. So reached out to several local districts and was doing some reading and some research and from our, some of our consultants. The way not to go is to get some canned curriculum and, and have students, you know, spend the first 10 minutes of every classroom learning about anti-racism. Now there might be time for explicit instruction and it might show up and we need some targeted stuff. But it's a systemic issue and it has to be embedded in everything that we do, like social emotional learning and all of the other things. So we will continue, you know, the things that we always do, curate our literature and curriculum materials to ensure that they reflect the equity of voice, the students who are sitting in front of them, so they can see themselves. I think that we don't realize how much identity we give to the students who are sitting in front of teachers by the, the text that we pick and the materials that we pick and the stories that we tell and the perspective and the voice. And so really learning to be mindful of that. And that's all, you know, professional development that's coming this year. And then Nicole and I have a date next week to talk about the curriculum adoption policy and potentially adding some, some things about anti-racism and making sure that we're paying attention to identity, ensuring that in classroom instruction is responsive to the kids who are sitting in front of us, right? And, and criticality, which is making sure or really understanding that there is a, a power inequity difference in our classrooms, being mindful of the unrecognized power imbalance that, that really does exist. You know, even though it's, it's not glaring potentially, it, it's there. And so when we plan our lessons and plan our curriculum and our work, that we are very mindful of that. So we, maybe we'll be thinking about adding something like that. And again, adding some social emotional lens and other things that weren't part of traditional curriculum planning. So that's our job for next week, Nicole. Next, Marty? Okay, just probably a repeat, but this is Action Steps for Embedding Anti-Racism Into the Curriculum is our professional development for curriculum leaders and curriculum writing, incorporating identity and criticality. And, and that, those two phrases come from Goldie Muhammad in her book and her work with anti-racism and systemic racism. So PD for teachers and lesson planning, time for educators to collaborate on updating, creating new lessons, continued support for purchasing curriculum-related materials. We have another order coming in for our middle school literature libraries that our teachers had called last year. And now they're adding new selections to. And then hoping for additional coaching into the 21, 22 school year, hoping for maybe eight more teachers going into next year. So I get the momentum going and, you know, the teachers are, you've all pointed out, doing a phenomenal job. They're under a lot of pressure. And so also trying to be mindful of how much PD they have and, you know, how much new, new stuff we give them this year. But I think it's a pretty balanced plan and they, they'll leave them some time for some other PD. We are happy to answer or try to answer any questions or.
Yes, thank you for the update. I'm wondering if we have, or if the district has, and maybe this is premature, maybe this is something that will come with it. What is, what are our, what are our milestones we're looking for in this work? What are we really, like, what does this look like when we're actively anti-racist in Long Meadow? Like, I think that's an important, you know, goalpost to have in mind. When, when will we be, when will we feel like, wow, we've really made a difference? And we have, you know, taken down these like substantial institutional barriers to equity?
I don't want to answer for the whole district, but I think for me is, like, it starts with recognition. Like, it's as, it's as basic as that, right? It's not something that we think about in a community like ours a lot. It's not something that we experience a lot. And so just understanding that when you say to a student, hey, pop in after class or after school for some help and not, not thinking that, you know what, they might live in a different community. They might not live here. There might not even be an option for them. So that, that speaks to that kind of imbalance of power, we call it power. But, you know, just like, I would call it a success if we all got into the mindset of like, you know, it's here. You know, it's, it's everywhere in the world. And I feel like that's step one. It's almost like the 12-step program, like that's step one of the 12-step program. Once we, we understand and learn that, then we can make change. You know, Marty, do you have anything to add to that?
Thinking more, I think that's, I think you're spot on with that. I think, thinking more concretely, we ought to give some thought to some of the immeasurables in terms of the surveys that we do for staff and students and parents. We could, we could, you know, perhaps put together some of that with, with CLE. One of the things that CLE will do that we forgot to mention tonight is still do a community-wide survey. And so that might be like sort of a benchmark for us. We might kind of see, all right, this is where we are when that survey gets issued this fall. Where are we next fall? Where are we the following fall? So that, that might be some indicators that we could track over time. I think the, the diversity of our staff is another thing that we can sort of tangibly track to do a better job of attracting and recruiting and retaining educators of color. And I know that the committee has, you have your goal session coming up on October 6th. We're doing the retreat with the admin team. And perhaps we want to spend some time on that great question, you know, what are the milestones? Where do we, where do we want to be in a year? Where do we want to be in five years, 10 years? And there's a lot of energy around this in the community too. The select board has put together a coalition. I, I talked to town manager today. I want to make sure that we're understanding where that group is going and how we can support the work that the town is doing in this area as well. But yeah, I, I think you're asking a great question and I'd love some, some feedback and thoughts and direction from the committee as well on that.
I know the kids have learned something. So until we know how we're going to measure whether or not they learned something, we don't know if we've done anything. So that's definitely a great thing for us to be discussing on the 6th. It's a good question. And I, I would appreciate if we could get consistent updates on the specifics, maybe on how the curriculum is being changed or being adjusted. And maybe some updates from the people who are working with Better Lesson about their coaching sessions. I know they're going to end up presenting at some point to the staff. But it'd be, I think, helpful for us to know concretely what is happening in front of children to make an impact. Because that's the only way anything's going to make a difference. So thank you. Anyone else? Kevin? I see you, Gianna. You'll be next.
Thanks, Sue. It was definitely really important work and we appreciate all your efforts on this. There's a couple of things that, that come into my mind. I think your, your point about student voices is really important. And I don't think we can overstate the importance of that. To me, the most powerful statements we've read were student reflections on times where they were discriminated against. And, and that has happened from teachers, unfortunately. It has happened unfortunately from their classmates. And, and I think those statements are the most powerful thing that our community needs to hear. And, and along those lines, one thing I'd really like us to explore, and this is something that, that we've had at Smith, that has been incredibly powerful, is something called a grounded knowledge panel, which I'm happy to talk to you more about. But just to give people an overview, those panels are, you have a facilitator, could be Shelley Warren, could be Tom Landers, whoever, who bring together participants. And I'm imagining perhaps the safest people to do that might be recent graduates to talk about what was their experience in Long Meadow Public Schools. And the audience is not allowed to speak. The audience is there to observe. And I imagine the audience could be, there could be students, could be teachers, a whole bunch of variety of audiences. But it's a really powerful situation where you as an audience member have no ability to question, comment. You are simply there to observe a conversation. And it has been some of the most powerful things I've ever seen. And so I would encourage us to take a look at that. And, and the only other thing I would say is I, I heard a really interesting story on NPR about anti-racist education in the Denver Public Schools. And they said the single most important thing they did was to fund some of their history teachers to go to the African-American History Museum in Washington DC. Obviously, right now. Obviously, right now, that's a bit of a challenge. Uh, but I think that could be something we should look into as a way to spend some professional development money in a way that might have a really profound impact, uh, on some teachers who can then bring it back and influence the district. So those are the, the things I want to say. Thank you.
Gianna?
Thanks, Ryan. Yeah, Sue, thank you so much for, you know, there's so much information out there and for, for you for, you know, filtering through all this and creating a plan. I, um, I, I'm collaborating on a community-based anti-racism initiative and, and, you know, and doing research for that. Um, some of the stuff that I've noticed is, you know, beyond the kind of the education and the awareness and, you know, the, the content and curriculum, you know, the professional development and workshops and all the things that, um, that we've been talking about, that you've been, you know, providing for us. Um, you did mention the, the social emotional piece and I just want to really emphasize that, you know, a, a lot of the, you know, the anti-racism, uh, successes are coming from, you know, that, that kind of that feelings, thoughts and actions triangle, um, you know, with the emphasis on empathy and mindfulness and, and communication skills. So again, I, I heard you say, you know, tying in the social emotional, uh, learning piece. But I just want to be really, um, strongly advocate for that. Um, again, the empathy and, and, you know, the, the compassion side and, and those kinds of, of teachings and, and learnings and, and skill set, um, that we really focus on those as a foundational piece for achieving, you know, the anti-racism, um, you know, goals that we're talking about.
Thanks, Shana. Great, great point. Anyone else with questions? Sue or Marty? Okay. Seeing none, there's a possible motion on the floor?
I moved that the school committee adjourn the September twenty-second, twenty-twenty school committee meeting.
Is there for a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Gianna?
Yes.
See?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Yes.
Rodman?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Thank you, folks. We will see you on the eighth.
Thank you.